Hi, everybody.
Guys.
Welcome. I would like to start the program of personnel meeting. I can call that to order at this time. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, or nation under God, and to this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is an invitation for public comments. Marnie, you have signed in. Marnie Navarro.
Good evening. I am Marnie Navarro, lifelong Libertyville resident and proud District 70 and 128 graduate. I speak for myself. I note that this committee meeting, again, unfortunately conflicts with District 70 orientation for incoming sixth graders, including for my only child at Highland, as it did for parent orientation in April. Because of how important these next steps are for our community, my daughter Olivia is here with me tonight, we have a lot of course correction and rebuilding to be done in the short three years before she enters District 128. Having committee and board meetings on Monday evenings is unreasonable and a real deterrent to community participation. Serious consideration should be given to moving meetings to an alternate evening and also significantly shortening the length. Three- to five-hour bimonthly meetings are unproductive and do not occur in your feeder districts nor in the private sector. As our district is coming out of a very costly and tumultuous period, still apparently not having reached terms of a separation agreement with former Superintendent Herman, the community would like to request that this board and administration's attention be focused on the importance of the future. And to do so, we need to take a hard look at the past, take stock of how we got here, and not repeat costly mistakes. At last month's board meeting during the superintendent's report, there were repeated citation to District 128's strategic plan as some sort of sacrosanct immutable tenet that cannot be altered. This is problematic to the community because the strategic plan was based upon a survey in the fall of 2021, during the middle of COVID and school shutdown, during the most tense and volatile period of recent history, including the George Floyd riots. It was derived in large part from a survey of less than 300 then-District 128 parents that correlates to less than 10% participation with no feeder-school input. From that, three tenants were extrapolated as goals for District 128: health and well-being, equity and inclusion, which was narrowly defined by Superintendent Herman to equate to only select racial minorities and not comporting with community feedback calling for equity between campuses in course offerings and resources, a call which remains unanswered to this day, and three, exploring multiple pathways. Even the oft-cited DARING acronym, none of the DARING tenants nor of District 128's strategic plan even reference education or academics. That's a really big problem, and a big part of the reason why what happened in the last three years was allowed to happen and have gone on for so long unquestioned. None of the four unsupported ideological initiatives should have been permitted to go on so far without critical questions being asked, both about why in the first instance, including the applicability to our demographics and community, and the how, including cost. District 128 needs to get back to basics. You are a school. You are here to provide a rigorous education to all children in this district. That is why we, parents, myself included, moved here and pay astronomical property taxes so that our kids can get top-notch education they deserve and why District 128 has historically delivered for decades. Three years later, after millions of wasted dollars, we find ourselves in a costly mess caused by a board allowing a rogue ideologue superintendent with a sordid track record of six districts in 11 years to put ideology before education in an attempt to dismantle our historically high-performing curriculum. Our standardized test scores are down. Four and a half years post-COVID, we still have not returned to a standardized credible grading system which will prepare our students for the rigors and reality of college in the real world. I'm almost done. No operational MTSS is currently in place, although we did start planning it in March after the parents and community called to light we had no plan. We submitted a petition to you with over 1,100 current parent and taxpayer signatures calling for a return to academic credibility and common sense. Future 128 goals should be based upon our community now, not the fall of 2021, including feeder districts and incoming District 128 students. The community is watching. We want transparency, communication, collaboration, and meaningful engagement in the search for the next superintendent. Education over ideology. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? You don't have to sign in.
Good evening. John Hetzel. I know that you have your calendar and you stick to it like you do a lot of things. You don't pivot ever, and you're not real flexible sometimes. Don't quite understand how you managed to put this meeting on the first day of school. Obviously, there's very few people here that can attend or even probably following because of it. Most people want to be home with their kids on the first day of school. Would have been pretty easy and simple. Also, a lot of other districts, including the high school districts, don't do meetings on Mondays, so I support pretty much that thought from Marnie, as well as everything else she said. Again, you need to get back to the academics. A couple of years ago, I stood up here and pretty much said the same thing in many versions of a similar way as Marnie did tonight. So I just get a little confused why it's pulling teeth with you guys to get flexibility in your ability to make decisions and manage the district. It just doesn't seem right. Also, one last thing I wanted to say tonight was, I've called this out before and some other people have, and a lot of community members have followed as well. It doesn't seem like the legal counsel that you're getting is the best legal counsel on how it set us up a little bit here in this district for some of the problems that have occurred. You also, it's a longstanding legal counsel, if I'm not mistaken. Highly recommend that you look at alternatives to that. Many of the community members feel that's necessary, and many of the community members that have legal backgrounds also feel that's necessary. So I just think when you have about 3,000 community parents that are very much aware and supportive of a lot of the efforts some of these people have been making the last several months, it's time to start listening to them. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Going once, going twice, seeing none. All right, we're going to move along to--
And before we start the actual meeting, could I nudge you with just a word? I know there's been some question about something. I just wanted to give a quick update on where we stand with the Title IX audit for District 128 for all extracurricular activities. I want to say that our process is in motion. We have received proposals from several law firms who have completed these before for other districts. We will be reviewing and evaluating these proposals, and this will continue our process and will appear on a future agenda. So this is well along the way, and I just wanted to make that point.
This is in response to some questions that were raised.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. For discussion, Item A, Board Policy Updates. This is our second reading. Do we need an additional overview?
Any ques-- Most of the questions, most of the updates are five-year reviews, some legal references, but very short updates on these, and this is our second reading that we've gone through on these, and they'll go to the next board meeting for approval.
And then we had some, we had a policy change that occurred August 1st. Press sent a release out about new law that went into effect August 1st, and right now I cannot remember what it was.
We have another group coming, a press update. So a lot of times when laws change, sometimes press may be behind, but we will follow the law in what we do. Sometimes laws change, and then there is some, you know, it could be six months' time that you put a new, you have to have your policy adopted in a certain amount of time, but we are on track.
Okay. Great. Are there any comments or questions here? Okay, moving on. We have a memorandum of agreement with the ESP moving to a higher position.
So, you know, last spring, end of the school year, we, the board, came to agreement with our D-120 Educational Support Professional Union, and we agreed on a great collective bargaining for our ESP. However, sometimes when you put a new agreement together, we work from scratch. So this is not, you know, has not been in place at all before. We find, you know, there are some things that we, you know, want to work together on. And so the ESP union and administration, we worked together on coming to a solution for ESP currently in roles here that want to move to a different position. And in our ESP contract, we have positions that are aides, IT, office personnel, so different categories, and then different tiers within that category depending on the job. This was all determined during our negotiations and then our final agreement. But we found that there was a little quirk in there that if somebody wanted to move to another position, but they had been with us for a little bit, they might have surpassed that starting rate. And so moving someone to a new position that was considered a higher tier, we didn't, we couldn't put them at the starting rate because then they would take a pay decrease. And so we were trying to come up with a solution. We looked at what some other school districts do, and we came together for this agreement. And so our recommendation is to approve this memorandum of agreement at our board meeting. And again, the union and us worked together well on this, and so I think this is a great-- Again, there's going to be, it's a three-year agreement. There's going to be things along the way that either we can work together on it and not have an MOA, but there may be times in the next couple of years that we may have to bring some things back.
That's a good solution.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions there? Okay, moving on to Item C, the EOS report.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Larry Varan, and I'm the Director of Equity and Inclusion for the district. Tonight, we are presenting to you our end-of-year update from Equal Opportunity Schools, which is a part of our partnership with EOS. This evening's presentation is slightly delayed, but still information to know the status of the partnership from the 2003-2004 school year and is aligned with our commitment of student success and our racial diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. First, I want to start off with our district beliefs when it comes to diversity, inclusion, and representation. And in our policy, our committee created these beliefs that around our commitment to acknowledging that there are barriers related to opportunities for some groups of students. And we take responsibility for addressing that disproportionality within the data that we have as a district, and that we see nationwide. Because we in D-128 know and we, that access to equitable educational opportunities can narrow and ultimately eliminate achievement gaps for our students of color and underrepresented students of low income. And these beliefs are manifested in our racial diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. Next slide, please. And Policy 712 was written because it really developed our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we remain committed to building upon the strengths and assets of every student. We hold ourselves as a district accountable for striving towards proportional representation in our more rigorous courses of underrepresented students. And we measure this through one of our metrics that's actually outlined in the policy, that we want to ensure that we are collecting data and tracking our enrollment in upper-level and AP courses for students who we consider underrepresented. That policy was evolved into our strategic plan, and one of the goal areas of our three strategic plan goal areas is to prioritize equity and inclusion, where we ensure equitable opportunities and outcomes for all student populations. And then that further funnels down into our Equity Action Plan, making sure that we give all students, especially underrepresented students, access to on-grade level and appropriately rigorous education is one of our actions in our Equity Action Plan. And that metric was to increase the number of diagonal course placements for students. So our DEI policy, our strategic plan, and our Equity Action Plan are all anchored in our DARING mission. Representation in our accelerated classes symbolizes the global aspect of our mission. Diversity is multifaceted and must be embodied and embraced in our classes. And so we partnered with Equal Opportunity Schools to provide us with tools, protocols, and recommendations for increasing access to underrepresented students in our most rigorous courses, our advanced placement courses. Through EOS, D-128 worked with our access teams to identify, recruit, and enroll high-potential underrepresented students for AP. And just to clarify, our work with EOS was targeted towards increasing the enrollment of underrepresented students in AP. While the outreach was targeted, there were certainly aspects of the protocols that would benefit all student groups. But our underrepresented students included our low-income students of all races and ethnicities, our Black or African-American students, and our Hispanic and Latino students, because these are the students who are typically and historically underrepresented in advanced placement courses nationwide. EOS supported us in generating a comprehensive outreach list, which was created using this criteria: students who expressed interest in taking an AP class, students who had comparable academic achievement using their GPA and test scores, and had been recommended by a teacher or staff member or demonstrated strong academic self. This comprehensive outreach list yielded 629 students who were identified as potential-- who identified for outreach by EOS. For our first attempt at outreach, D-128 decided to narrow down and make our list more targeted. Our access teams chose to develop this more targeted outreach list and make, by making a combination of all of EOS's criteria plus the additional criteria of not currently being enrolled in an AP class. This targeted outreach list yielded 182 students district-wide who would be targeted to, who would be targeted for outreach through this initiative.
One of the things about the outreach that's important-- Can you go back, Eli? So when we look at the criteria that we used as we were identifying students, express interest in the subject matter is something that all students, we believe, who take an AP class have an interest in that subject. Comparable academic achievement is looking at what are the profiles of the students who are successful in these classes and who are students who have similar profiles but have not yet enrolled in those courses. We also looked at teacher recommendations, which is the similar process for students who are enrolled in AP courses. They get teacher recommendations that say you would be successful in this course. We looked at students who had not enrolled in AP, but were still getting those teacher recommendations, as well as having students who are confident in their academic skills saying, "I want to be challenged. I want to be part of a very rigorous course environment." So the 182 students that we have targeted for this program were completely of the same profile of students who would normally be in our AP classes, but the one factor that these students have was that they had not yet taken an AP course. And so what we wanted to do was really spend some time with those students, saying, "Why not? You have all the criteria. You have the profile of an AP student, yet for a variety of reasons, maybe you haven't selected that course. Let's talk about what it would mean for you to take an AP class and what conditions would be in place to help you be successful."
And so from those 882 students, we really appreciate our teachers and staff who were identified as trusted adults by the students on this outreach list. Those trusted adults were asked to engage the student around conversations to take an AP class, letting the student know that they had been recommended, giving the student the criteria of academic identity that the student possessed necessary to do well in an AP class, letting them know that they believe in them, someone believes in them, and that they should be able to transfer those skills into an AP course. The trusted adult became an integral part of this work because this is an individual who the student feels connected to as a part of our organization. Following those 182 conversations, 104 of those students decided to enroll in an AP class. It is important to note that these students still had a choice whether or not they wanted to take an AP class, and following these conversations, they made an, they made an informed decision around whether they wanted to actually enroll in an AP class. Here's, here's the analogy for our EOS work and our trusted adult conversations. It's one thing to know that an event is happening and is open to anyone, and anybody can come, but when you receive a personal invitation, it increases your sense of belonging, and it communicates that this is a place for you, especially when that encouragement comes from someone who you trust and someone who you have a relationship with. That was the work of our trusted adults, and we truly appreciate them taking the time to connect with these students on this level. Of those 104 students, here is the racial and ethnic breakdown of who enrolled. Here's our underrepresented list. We see the greatest AP enrollment coming from our Latino student population. We are excited to have these students of all races and all ethnicities who represent our underrepresented population taking that invitation and accepting it to become an AP student. Now, we talked about the goal of this partnership being to identify high-potential students to take an AP class. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the AP student profile of our current AP students from last year, 2023-2024, and the targeted students who accepted our invitation and are going into AP this, this year. Last year, our average GPA of our AP students who had always been enrolled in an AP class without any initiative was a 3.6. Our underrepresented targeted group of students who are going into AP classes have an average GPA of a 3.3. It is comparable to those students who are always taking an AP class in our district. The range of our AP students last year ranged from a GPA of 1.74 to a 4.0. The range for our targeted outreach students is between a 2.06 and a 4.0. So it really is the same profile of a student who had always been in our AP class and had found success in our AP class. We were intentional about making sure that these were underrepresented students who had high potential to do well in AP. Then when we look at those students, those targeted students' test scores, 90% of them scored in the top quartile of our current AP student scores. That means when we look at our SAT scores for our AP students that were already in AP, the students that we targeted, outreach, and added to AP had a SAT score higher than 75% of those students. And those not scoring in the top quartile, that other 10%, had a GPA range of 3.0 to 4.0. And so when we compare our AP enrollment from fall of last year to fall of this year, specifically looking at our targeted students, our underrepresented population, we have increased by 10% the number of underrepresented students who are enrolled in an AP class. And when we compare that by demographic, we see that, looking at our five-year trends, our work around our policy, our strategic plan, and our Equity Action Plan showed data that we'd remained relatively consistent in our enrollment by race and ethnicity. With our work with EOS, it allowed us to increase all of our student demographics significantly for the 2024-2025 school year. And this is our 12th through 10th graders. Our ninth graders are not included in this data piece because they weren't enrolled in our buildings when we pulled this data. And so we would definitely like to thank our access team members from both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools, who worked diligently to ensure that our efforts to increase diversity and representation in our AP classes was successful. As we move into 2024-2025, we, our goal is to continue to evaluate and monitor the success of these targeted students who were enrolled in the AP classes, and we also want to increase the percentage of targeted students enrolled in an advanced-level class for this year. As we enter into year two, as we enter into year two of a two-year partnership with EOS, there will be adjustments made to the partnership. These include, on these bullets here, where we will maintain some of the student identification processes shared with us by EOS to create that targeted outreach list, adapting and personalizing EOS recommendations to fit the context and the culture of D-128, and making sure that our D-128 staff are trained to lead all diagonal movement efforts and ensure relevance and impact on our system. And then expand the targeted courses to include dual credit in any college-bearing credit course to expand beyond advanced placement classes.
I just want to comment. One of the things that we experienced, while we liked some of the ideas and processes that EOS offered, we didn't necessarily like the fact that in our partnership last year, they wanted their staff to deliver the trainings to our staff, and they were really hyper-focused just on the amount of students enrolled in AP. And for us as a district, we were, we wanted to have a different type of partnership where we had an organization like EOS who has a lot of experience in this work, offering us some ideas and giving us some, some guidance on strategies that have worked. But we want our people to be able to adapt those things for our context and to lead that work with our staff. And so that was one of the ways that we're going to sort of reduce our partnership with EOS moving forward next year is administratively, we'll still be in consult with EOS about some of the programs and the different types of recommendations they would make for us as we start year two of this, but it would be our own staff members who would be leading any work that would be with our staff, and we would have full license to adapt and adjust the EOS work to more directly fit our context so that it doesn't feel like a boilerplate kind of, this is a standard model that we're just going to drop in on a school. We can make a lot more adjustments to it. Specifically, the other piece was, we were a little frustrated that EOS was hyper-focused on AP. We value AP, and we want students to take AP. We know that there's good research that students who take at least one AP class in high school are significantly more likely to graduate from a four-year university. So we want that opportunity for all of our students who feel that that's an important experience for them to have, but we also believe that there's value in our students taking honors classes and in the dual credit. And specifically, next year, we want to focus a lot of this work on our dual-credit courses because really with our exploring multiple paths, what we want is, we want more students to have the opportunity to take college-credit-bearing classes while they're in high school. So reducing our partnership with EOS will allow us to expand the data pools that we look at and the student populations that we're working with to be a little bit more expansive than what having a tight partnership with EOS would have allowed us to do. One example of how D-128 will work, I think, moving forward is what Larry is going to show us next. One of the ideas that EOS had was the idea of when you are working with students to help them be successful as they move into AP, to offer summer AP bootcamps. It's a program that we've seen in other area schools as well. What we did was, we took this idea, and we had our own people, Larry Varan, Ben Rodriguez, and a number of AP teachers from District 128 met this summer, and they worked and designed a Student Success Workshop that was completely designed by the talented people we have in District 128 to be designed, to be given to our students. And this is a good example of how we would take ideas that EOS may offer and use our own people to take the ideas that we like and design them in ways that we know will be successful with our students. So we're going to transition to a little bit of a video on the summer, the Student Success Workshops, and then we can have questions on this at the end.
The Student Success Workshop was designed for diagonal movers, students who are being introduced to the level of rigor in AP and honors classes for the first time in their high school careers.
We want to help our diagonal movers. We want to help, help those kids that may need a little bit of a boost in their, that are, we want to encourage kids to be in the most rigorous classes possible. We want to encourage kids to be in the most rigorous classes possible. And some of them need to feel like they belong there and need a little bit of extra help. I'm going to be doing that throughout the year, but I just want to help out during the summer.
The D128 student success workshop was designed by faculty who teach honors and AP classes. Staff from LHS and VHHS worked collaboratively to create an experience for students. That would provide them with skills necessary to handle the increased rigor of honors and AP classes.
I have to say that this is probably one of the the best collaborative committees that I have been on. Because I felt like we all really are, we gelled our ideas together and we had a common purpose. Everybody felt their voice was heard and we got a chance to sort of immediately see the the product of our efforts there. So as a professional working with other professionals, the just the opportunity to see something come to fruition.
I I'm thinking about a study that I've read a couple of times and I reread recently from U Chicago. And it talks about the non cognitive factors that influence students academic performance. And when you look at what interventions can actually have been proven to impact. Things like academic behavior, academic mindset and learning strategies are proven to be the things that can have the largest effect size. Through intervention. So I was really excited that our sessions focused on those exact things and gave actionable strategies for students. So I'm really hoping that they put those to use and we're going to be surveying them in the future to see, you know, after first semester, how did they do? What did they find useful? So I'm hoping that they put those strategies to use and we can build on it based on their feedback.
Workshop sessions included mindset and motivation, critical thinking and communication, organization and study skills, and time management and wellness.
I think it was well run and I think there was a lot of positive energy from all parties involved. I think, and I think it would be a positive impactor on the students, especially a lot of the freshman students coming in. Just making sure they know that they're valued, that we want them to be successful. And that give them some skills and make sure they regardless of what skills they got in the workshop, just I could sense a feeling of just that belonging and ready to go, ready to start the first day. So felt pretty positive there on the skill sets there.
From the the student side of things, I think we all did a really good job of presenting the kids with just a whole variety of tools. And I told the kids during the day that this was somewhat like a buffet for them. We were going to give them a whole bunch of skills that they could use to be successful at school. And they have the opportunity now to see which things speak the most to them and then try to apply them. So, you know, throughout the day, seeing the kids sort of feverishly jot down things that we were talking about in our sessions. That to me was very encouraging because it's saying, stuff that I'm saying to you is having that impact in the moment. And they're wanting to actually copy things down to try to remember for later.
I thought it was a really good introductory to high school experience for the for the incoming freshmen. I think the sessions were a pretty good length. I think we covered a variety of topics that was good. But there was enough overlap that I feel like the mess, some messages got reinforced also, which which I liked. I think there was enough reinforcement without repetitiveness.
The other thing that I was pretty excited about was the number of freshmen that we saw. That same U Chicago study talks about how the transition from eighth grade to freshman year is a really vulnerable time for students academically. And so to have have the workshop out front of that and to help them with that transition by reiterating some of the some of the skills that are going to be beneficial to them. I'm really proud that we were able to reach so many freshmen and I hope we can expand on that in the future.
By the end of the workshop, participants expressed an overwhelming increase in their confidence about taking a more rigorous course.
Total, we had about 272 students participate. A good mix from both schools, Vernon Hills and Libertyville High School. And the majority of the participants were incoming freshmen. But we did have a cohort each day of upper class students, sophomores and juniors who participated. We put them in their own groups. And those sessions were taught a little bit differently because they're already familiar with the high school. They've already developed some academic strategies. So we kind of had different differentiation for kids who are older versus the incoming freshmen who hadn't ever experienced high school.
Quick question. How many of the 104 students were in the workshops that that were? I think you had 182 and from that you came down to 104 or something like that that actually enrolled. How many of them were in these workshops?
So of the 104 students, those would have been our upper class students. We had approximately 25 upper class students participate in it. The majority of the students were ninth graders taking their first honors of AP class coming into the ninth grade.
How many dual credit courses do we offer now?
I don't, I don't have that info off the top of my head. But we're expanding. I think we have at least, I can think of at least two to three that. And then I'll have to get back to you on how many have been approved over the summer that we're moving forward with.
I have the list of dual credits. Early childhood education, workplace internship, English composition, math, computer science, math calculus three. Science, earth, earth science, German for world languages. Did I say, and then English composition two.
Eight.
And then world languages, French.
Was that eight or nine?
Different ones. And then some of them are offered, you know, at both buildings and some offer twice. So one, two.
And then we have some CTE classes that may not be dual credit, but you get college hours for. So just there's, there's a little bit there.
There's nine, 10?
Having taught both AP and dual credit courses, I am a strong proponent of dual credit and I'm glad to see that that's your focus. Anytime these kids get an opportunity to do college level work. It's great for their future.
Yes.
So I'm glad to hear that you're doing that.
Right. And and we value our AP, but AP is not the only game in town. And there's some significant drawbacks, as you well know, to AP. Which is the pace and the narrowness of the curriculum, which in some dual credit opportunities. Gives the instructor more freedom to explore broader aspects. So that's why we are putting our energy around all of those and not limiting ourselves.
Great.
Does limiting the scope of our partnership with EOS reduce our cost?
No, we entered into a two-year contract with EOS that is fully executed. So the cost of EOS remains the same as when we initiated the contract.
So Dr. Fern, can I, you kind of got. When I was reading through the presentation, my questions were what worked, what didn't? And what would you recommend to change? So thank you for giving some color. I I think I have a better understanding of that. But one of my other was Lisa, what you said. So how do we maximize our partnership with EOS so that we're getting the full value of what we contracted for? They, under your parameters, like how are we, because we want to get the value of our money, right? And we're going to pivot to what you have as a committee decided is important. But they still have an obligation to us. So how are we going to maximize our relationship with them to get our benefit?
Yeah, I think the key thing for our partnership with EOS is really building the capacity of our own staff. And and having that ability to take tools and resources from EOS and then make them our own. So that we can phase out the partnership with EOS, but continue to take on the the work of increasing and supporting our underrepresented students in accelerated courses.
So what does that look like?
It looks like them training us. So rather than EOS, like like Dr. Clinton said, rather than EOS coming in and providing professional development. They come in and they train us under the professional development. And now we're building the capacity of our own staff to continue to 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 lead and facilitate those sessions. When their partnership has has sunset.
So instead of EOS doing the training, are you saying that EOS is doing, train the trainer with our staff so that our staff can adapt and deliver?
Right. They they'll, they'll work with us, Larry and I and committees on teaching and learning team, the leadership teams. And we'll decide what pieces of it we think are valuable for our system. One of the big changes that we made with them was they would allow for a train the trainer model with us. That was not something that was available the first year. And so we feel that is a much more beneficial model for us. Because as Mr. Varne said, then our staff are able to acquire the skills and understandings of what these programs and guidelines could be once implemented. And make them our own and kind of design them in the way that we know works for our system. Rather than have somebody come in from the outside, do something with us one time that doesn't really stick and doesn't stay with us. So we'll continue having frequent meetings with EOS, but all the work would happen sort of behind the scenes. And our staff would only get the benefits of the programs that we create and make our own. That we know are going to have value to our teachers and a positive impact on our students.
Wasn't another prong of our partnership with them was their algorithm in identifying those students and that we wanted to take that over. So is that another part of our, you know, what we're going to be focusing on this year so that we are ready to take whatever?
Yes, so the the student survey. And that is where a very important part of how we start to identify those targeted students. So we will give that survey again this year for our students pieces. Knowing that this is the last year we give it. EOS, that's a proprietary survey. So we won't be able to take their survey and use it on our own. But we'll be able to develop some of the ideas and the questions and the characteristics that EOS would be looking for. In subsequent types of screeners that we would do with students in the future.
And I was assuming that's the important part in the self actions, you know, the self recognition of the student and that they have the interest and they see themselves as this kind of student, right? So we are able to make that in, because that was always the plan from our conversation is that that work was going to be done in-house.
My question, I was still back on the 25% of the students. Actually took the workshop. So I'd like to kind of, as you go forward. Look at how did the 25% who took the workshop versus the 75% who did not take the workshop? Was there any difference in their in their outcomes? Because we, I know while we talk a lot about enrolling students, what really matters is that they actually make it through the class and and exit the class successfully, right? So I'm I'm more worried about the other part.
Yes, that's a part of our tracking for our students. Although some students were not able to attend in person, we also made the workshop available asynchronous. So it was sent out to those families to go on at their own pace or leisure. For those students to to still get the same information that was there. It was also shared out with our staff. So that they could be aware of the strategies that were shared with the students who attended. And could also use it as a reference point for students in their classes. But yes, we will be, I think Ms. Phillips in the video mentioned that we were going to continue to monitor the data and see how our students using these strategies and seeing how how successful and supports are being used. Not just this particular support for students, but the other supports that were a part of the student support plan for diagonal movers. We'll be evaluating all of those to see how effective they have been in supporting students.
So when, we don't have to do this today, but in the future, I would like to see in general. What are the specific metrics we are capturing for not just these, but really all students, especially diagonal movers and heterogeneous? All the, all the students we accelerated for under various programs? What other specific metrics we are looking at to make sure that they are on track? Or if they need help, that we are identifying them before, before they get in trouble from in a class standpoint?
I guess what you're looking at is what does evaluate and monitor look like, right? Like I want a picture of when evaluate and monitor.
And how often? Because that ties in with, do we have the right support available? And do we have enough people? Do we not have enough people? And it should also inform whether what we are doing now should actually be done next year. Because I saw that one of our goals here is to expand access. I wouldn't quite go there yet till we know that what we've done so far is actually what we expected.
The goal was to increase students accepting. We do, we do absolutely want more underrepresented students to accept the invitation. We want to provide that support to them. But when we talk about expanding, we we had 57% say yes. We want to know what were the barriers that made the students who said no, say no? How can we address those barriers so that they feel more connected to AP, that they feel more prepared for AP? Or a dual credit as well to see if AP is not the route for you. You have demonstrated a high potential. How can we tap into that potential and get you to actually enroll in in a more rigorous course?
Are there any other questions? Okay, I think this goes to you, Tom. Again, educational tours?
Yes, there are educational tours for your approval. I don't know if I need to speak to any of them.
I'm representing.
We've read through them.
I assume, I think.
I had a couple of questions that I emailed you. So if you have that information, you can share tonight. If not, we can discuss it at the regular board meeting before we take action.
Yeah, I think in terms of the, you asked about the volley, or excuse me, the the cross country from Vernon Hills, they take the white district buses. So the smaller white buses, so there's no costs associated with. We don't factor in the cost into the proposal for them taking the the white buses. Which is why that information wasn't on the proposal. And then for the volleyball, the
For cross country, I think there was, I would have to look it up.
Yeah, the question was why there was no transportation included in the proposal.
Thank you.
And the answer is they take the small white buses. So those are district vehicles. We don't, we historically haven't put that in the those proposals because they're an in-house resource that we use.
Understood. Thank you. And then the other one was for volleyball. For LHS girls volleyball.
Right. So for volleyball, LHS, that's a competition during the season. So the costs associated with the tournament fees are part of the athletic department's budget. So they're not something that the the team has to fundraise for separately. That's where those costs would come from.
Okay. Typically, when that's the case, it's still listed on the expense spreadsheet. It just does not show coming from the district. It shows coming from a budgeted expense. So that's why I was
That's why you questioned that one, yeah.
So.
Right, got it.
And Dan, this is more of a question for you, just so that, so when we see that it's a district student activity budget item. That is money that they have, that comes either from their fundraising or from the fees for that club or that activity, right?
I don't necessarily have much to do with those budget sheets. That's really under Tom's area. But in general, like if it says district budget, like athletics, but it's part of the, what we budget for under athletics. And activities also has a budget for competition. It's primarily competition travel that we pay for a good portion of.
Is there anything else? All right, thank you. Moving on to employment of employees.
But we do have a, an extensive list for this one, which would include some people being hired, replacements. Also some people that have announced retirements in the next few years for ESP. And then this would go on to the consent agenda for the board meeting.
And just a shout out to Pam Fukavix, who I taught with once upon a time, many years ago, who's joining our science department. Okay, future agenda items are listed. Is there anything that anybody else would like to place or discuss as an agenda item for the future?
I, we haven't really talked about doing the board retreat. Is that something? We haven't really talked about doing the board retreat. Is that something that we want to get back on and discuss?
They have some ideas for us. All right. Very good. I'm going to adjourn the P and P meeting at this time and turn it over to President Hessel, who's being, sitting in for Jim Batson, who's not with us tonight.
Not quite as capable or handsome as Jim Batson, but I will do my best. So I'm calling the F and F meeting to order. We have already done the pledge. And this, at this time, would like to extend an invitation for public comment for anybody who would like to address us now for F and F. Okay. Seeing none, we are going to move into our items for discussion. The first one is an update on our equity action plan commitment for equitable resources.
Good evening again. One of the things that we are looking at doing as it relates to the reporting out of our metrics in the ratio diversity, equity and inclusion policy is making sure that the reports that I give are aligned to some of the annual things that, that will come before the board. This particular presentation on equitable resources moving forward will be coming to you at the same time when Dan proposes the budget so that you can see how those two things work together. And Dan has worked with the business and finance office to ensure that equity is infused within that. So you will, you will hear an update on this particular commitment again in June or July, whenever Dan does. And so we want to make sure that we are aligning our commitments with the work of the organization. So you can see how these things are, are working collectively. So this evening, we're talking about equitable resources and our update for, for things that we are doing this year as it relates to equitable resources. Again, it comes from our policy commitment for, and our metric is identifying and reporting on district budget and how funds are allocated equitably. That also drills down into our strategic plan, goal area of equity and inclusion, which finds itself embedded with our equity action plan with a metric of publishing equitable funding process used by all account managers. This is an ongoing process. And so as, as Dan and his team continues to evaluate equitable allocation, we will, we will look at various areas. Last year, when I, when I reported to you on this, I shared with you some of the wonderful things that Dan's office had done with equitably providing resources for our capital projects and prioritization lists and how it aligns with our equity efforts as well as our professional learning process so that our staff are participating in professional learning opportunities that are aligned with our strategic, our strategic plan. And so when we talk about resources, here are the overall categories for schools and, and school resources. The work for this year looks at our building budget and our building budget, primarily the portion of it that is non-personnel related. And so how, how we are allocating funds for services, supplies and equipment, not how we are allocating funds for staffing in this particular way. And so equitable resourcing is an ongoing process. We've looked at several other areas. This year, in our, in, in the budget that Dan presented to you in the summer, they really focused on some of the efforts around the development of creating a funding formula that would be equitable as it related to the allocation of funds to our buildings. So let's start, let's start by looking at some of our past practice. What we have been doing in the past as a district is, is very similar to a zero-based budgeting process. Not exactly zero-based budgeting, but very, very closely related to it. And we were asking individual departments to request funds for their budget. And those individual departments, the English Department, Social Studies, Math, so on and so on, would come together and to, and would generate the building's budget. And that request would go over to the business office and then funds would be allocated in that way. That process, though, was creating per pupil allocation trends as such. And we began looking at this, looking at fiscal year 2021. And we can see the inequity between how, how each school, LHS is in orange, Vernon Hills is in blue, how much each school was being awarded or allocated based on that, that model. Now, we began in 2023, putting in, in place some intentionality and, and looking at, how can we narrow the gap between allocations between Vernon Hills and Libertyville? And, and so you'll see that the, the gap does narrow in, in the last two fiscal years. In, in 2024, we got really close to making sure that both schools were getting a, a equal allocation per pupil. The important thing, though, to remember is that equal isn't always equitable. And so giving each, each school the same amount per student may not meet the needs of Vernon Hills or may not meet the needs of Libertyville's student population. And so we began looking at various models and we landed on this new model, which is, which is based on splitting how we allocate our resources. And that split comes from a base amount that would be awarded to the schools and then a per student amount that's awarded to the schools. The base amount means that this is a, these are fixed costs that regardless of the size of the school, you still have to have a library. You still have to have a nurse's office. It doesn't matter how many students you have. These things still must exist and they have to be, have to be paid for. And so that base amount is awarded to each school equally because they have the same cost. Then there's the per student amount, and that amount is allocated per student based on enrollment. This alleviates the schools from feeling the stress of having to meet the base costs and, and subtracting money from our, taking the resources away from the per student amount. And so with that new model, we determine that by evaluating, Dan and his office determined that by evaluating what our current operating costs are for each school, that equates to about 57% of, of the budget. So that is that base amount, which would leave 43% for, for the student amount. And Dan will explain a little more about how he came to this particular calculation.
Yeah, the, the percentage is just the result, the end result. It's really what it was, we were looking at it. If you consider a lot of just operational standards, so nurse's office, security, things like that that exist that aren't, don't really change when you have more or less students in terms of supplies and services, that equated to about 1.2 million for each building. So that's the base amount for each building. They get 1.2 million to start. And then the rest was back calculated to produce a per student amount based on the last four or five years of trends. And so that base amount or that per student amount is 590. And so what it does is, if you looked, well, you looked at various models, but what this does is this will smooth out whether you have significant changes in enrollment and particularly when we're in declining enrollment, that it's not going to slash a building. It's going to hopefully hold them harmless to some extent because there's some costs that they're going to have, whether they're, if they're going down students, they're still going to have a library, for example. They just might have slightly less books that they're buying, but they still have significant costs associated with some of those programs. So that's, that's where those came from. And then going forward, the idea would be, what is the change to the base amount each year? And then what is the change to per student amount based on trends, costs and available resources?
Should I ask questions now or later?
That was a question. So I'm guessing you can ask questions now.
I didn't want to make you a flow, but I would like to understand how does equivalent schools model their budgets? And how does this align with some of the schools we compare ourselves?
Many schools that we compare ourselves to don't necessarily have a very complex formula for figuring out how to do that. The most common method you will find is what was budgeted last year? And then how much more or less do we budget this year based on everyone's best sense or requests? There are some districts that just do a flat dollar amount allocation. So what you'll find in some of the bigger districts like 214 or something like that, that have multiple high schools, they, they might just do a flat dollar per student, per student dollar amount allocation to the buildings. And that's how they do that. There's the pros and cons to various models. The con to that model is it will, it will adjust pretty quickly relative to enrollment, which could be good or could be bad depending on, I guess, the circumstance. And the reality is, is realizing regardless of enrollment, there's still some costs that are going to be the same. There's a, there's a front office in that building. And those costs really don't change much relative to the number of students. If you add, add 100 students, take away 100 students, the front office costs are pretty the same. The copier, copiers have the same amount of cost. We don't add or take away copiers when we have more or less students necessarily. It's not, it's not a fast adjustment like that. That's more of a longer term change. But this, the model that we have is, was inspired by Glenn Brook 225. They have a model similar to this. They have, they have, their, their formula isn't exactly like this. But the idea that there's a base cost and then a per student cost is something they've had in place for a long time. And I found that a pretty attractive calculation to be able to account for fixed costs that you have in a system plus variable costs that'll change based on students. So this was our, our attempt at trying to find a way to more equitable allocate rather than the methods that we had before that were, it was a, it was a fine process. But when you zoom back and look at the impact of that big picture, we started noticing different numbers that we didn't feel comfortable with at a, at a super zoomed out level.
Dan, I don't want to steal your thunder because I think you're going to get to this, but I think one of the pros is that it sort of matches ISB's funding model, correct?
Oh, you have more slides. I forgot about that. Yeah, it's in, it's, it's, it's this one. There you go. Look at that. There's another slide. Yeah, it's, it's aligned more with ISB's funding model, which has a lot of things based on per, per pupil allocations. ISB's funding model is more going to be based on staffing. That's where the biggest calculations come in in terms of ISB's funding model because, I mean, 70% of our budget is staffing. But they also do have things associated with supplies and equipment, things like that, that are, that are based on research, which is based on largely a per student allocations. So it is more aligned with ISB.
And, and, and to that point, I definitely want to acknowledge and thank Dan and his team for taking on this effort when it's, it's, it's not necessary, not necessarily something that other business offices are doing. They see the value and the, and the impact that equitably allocating resources can have on, on, on organizations and school districts. Our goals for this year will include making sure that we review the impact of this formula. This is our first year that we will have implemented this particular formula for how we budget it. So our business office will continue to monitor the impact that it has had on our schools for the school year and determine any adjustments that need to be made for the budgeting for fiscal year 26. And then as we continue to phase into equitable budgeting, we want to drill down from the building level down into our department level and explore how to develop similar calculations to be more equitable in how we are funding each department at the building level.
And you said that the review of the impact of these formulas will be tied to the 25, 26 budget that'll be presented in like June, July of 2025?
Yeah, we're going to primarily see how does this happen this fall, which is when we incur a lot of the costs because they're buying supplies for the year, kind of seeing how that goes at a building level and then trying to look at the department level to see what we can do at that level.
And then for capital improvements, we'll continue to use the model that we've been using, you developed over the last few years that prioritizes capital improvements.
That, that is a totally different process, totally different part of our budget. So if you go back to earlier, he had the, in terms of allocation of resources, there's a lot of ways that we allocate resources. Capital improvements is a, is a totally separate one.
Any more questions before we move on? Okay, moving on to the disposal report for fiscal year 2024.
Yes, so those of us that are newer, we, Board Policy 460 requires that if we're going to dispose of personal property that's more than diminutive value, that the board has to approve that. That's helpful from an accounting endpoint because we have to report on our capital assets. It's part of our financial reporting. And it's good for y'all to know, we spent money on district resources and now we're going, we're asking your permission to dispose of it. Dispose doesn't mean that we necessarily throw it away. Sometimes we scrap it. Sometimes we donate it. Sometimes we sell it. And what happened about a year ago-ish was we, we have these come periodically, not necessarily every month, but as they come, we present them to the board. And not every request that comes to us for disposal has to go to the board because a lot of things that we get, requests for disposal are diminutive value. They don't have much value at all. And so we were able to quickly process that and approve the disposals. The question came was, well, what hap, what actually happened? We approved the disposal. That's great. They said they were hoping to donate it. What actually happened? Did they donate it? Did they scrap it? What actually happened? So that was, that was requested of us. And last year, we hadn't never done that before. And what we, what the solution we came to was it's too hard to do this on a very regular basis, but we thought once a year, we can update you on all the disposals that happened over the last fiscal year, give you a, a one, once a year report. This is our second year now of doing this once a year report. So these are the disposals that the board approved in fiscal year 24. And these are, these are what happened with those disposals, be it they were sold, they were donated or they were scrapped.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Moving on to disposal of equipment that we will take action on at our next meeting at the end of the month. It looks like there are warmups in pants for the LHS. LHS cross country? Thank you, cross country. Any questions?
No.
Okay. We'll see that in two weeks. Moving on to item D, the fiscal year 24 year end analysis.
Yeah, so each year I try to provide a quick snapshot of what happened in the fiscal year. So primarily looking at how did the budget compare to actuals? And so this fiscal year 24 wrapped up, but in July, we just couldn't quite get it all done and buttoned up to have that in time for our July meeting. And so we have it here for the August meeting. And so what I have for you is a report that is really, at the very top level, is the high summary that summarizes revenue by our three major sources, local sources, which most of that is property taxes, state sources and federal sources. And then the bottom section is expenditures by our major object codes, salaries and benefits, supplies, services, things like that that you would have seen us reference on the previous presentation with Larry. So briefly, if I just look at revenues, for example, we budgeted 102.6 million of revenues and we actually received 104.8 million of revenues. That's a two point, roughly $2.2 million more over budget. If you look down, if you further down, there's a little bit more detail in terms of breaking out the revenues. The majority of that is interest income. That's something that I believe the board has been informed on well throughout the year that essentially interest rates when we budgeted for fiscal 24. And an interesting point to note, this is the first budget that we approved in June before the fiscal year began. So this is really interesting, I think, to find out, how did that, how did that happen? How, how accurate were we able to be? What changed? One of those things that wasn't quite as accurate as interest income, at that point, I feel is a little bit unpredictable to know that interest rates would stay as high as they are for so long. Our interest income is largely tied to the interest rates out there. And so that had a significant impact, but that's an extremely volatile source of revenue. Similarly, CPPRT that I believe the board is also pretty informed on, that's an extremely volatile. We guessed at 2.3 million last year for the budget. August is when we get the estimate from the Department of Revenue. They said 2.1. Okay, I let you all know. You all had that information. We actually received 1.9. So it's going down. So that the, the fear that I had that this revenue source that had been roughly a million dollars for a very long time skyrocketed to 3 million and I felt this is, this cannot be sustainable. This doesn't make any sense. We can't build our operations based on this and it's starting to come back down. And it's very likely that FY '25, it could be back to 1 million. I don't really know. It's, it's definitely going to be lower than we had. So on the, on the revenue side, interest income was significant. The other thing was state sources. One of them was special private facility. If you look at the note, the only reason that's over is because we actually received five quarterly payments. Normally, we look to get. Normally we look to get four, but we only received three in the previous year. So we got, it's just a timing thing. And the second one was transportation. That one, we got a lot more reimbursement than we, than I had anticipated, which is good. But that's because we had spent more than I anticipated in fiscal year '23. So that was over budget then and it resulted in more revenue. So that's what happened on the revenue side. I would say the interest income, we knew ahead of time the transportation was not quite as high as I had anticipated when we did our mid-year review, for example. But everything else is pretty straightforward in line. Overall expenditure or revenues at 102% of budget. Salaries and benefits on the expenditure side. I felt salaries coming in at 99.2 was extremely close. That's where the bulk of our money is. If you look at the detail, really the, the best summary, the short summary I could give you is it's, it's, we had some leave of absences that happened and some unfilled positions, meaning not all of our positions that we budgeted for were filled for the full 12 months. Right? Say we approve a position and, or someone leaves and you have that maybe sometimes a month gap between refilling that position. Well, that's a month of expenditure we didn't have, but I budgeted for the full position. So that happens every year. It's a little bit difficult to predict where that's going to happen. But those are really what I saw there. And you'll see there is a line there for 182,000 under other that was not budgeted. As a reminder, that was part of the ESP union agreement because we knew some expenditures were trending under and we knew we had more interest income. Part of our agreement with settling that contract was to pay out $2,000 to all the members for the ESP union. So that's where that money is. But overall expenditures on the salaries at 99.2, I feel that's extremely close. And benefits, in my opinion, were pretty, pretty incredible. We used our Skyward system to calculate benefits. A lot of times you'll find schools use spreadsheets and spreadsheets are fine. They're great, but you need to make sure you have double checks in your calculations because they're formulas. And anytime you involve humans, you've got a good chance for making mistakes. We utilize our, our ERP system to do these calculations and we also had our double checks to make sure we thought they were correct. And it turns out they were extremely accurate. A lot of the benefits are based on salaries. So meaning if you pay a dollar, that means you have to pay X amount of T R S. So if those are, if you have salaries that are down, your benefits that are tied to salaries are going to be down. So if you spend less on salaries, you might spend less on Medicare because it's directly tied. The one thing that I truly believe is astounding is medical insurance. For years, I've been trying to get this as close to 100 as I can because my, my whole goal is I want the budget to be accurate. I want it to be a good predictor of what we're going to spend for planning purposes. It, it hit at 100%, which is extremely accurate. Some of that is when we hire people, we don't exactly know what insurance they're going to take, whether they're going to take single or family. So we do an estimate. And people can change mid-year. They could have life, life circumstances change and might need to take on family insurance or life circumstances change. They may need to drop or change to an HMO or something like that. So those things are a little bit difficult to predict, but that's truly astounding. And overall benefits at 99.8, that's probably the closest that I've ever seen. Tuition reimbursement was a lot higher than we anticipated. We've had more teachers utilize this. And so that's something we need to watch for in terms of are we alloc, what are we allocating in the future? The rest of the budget is smaller than what we spend on salaries and benefits. But the highlight, I would say, under purchase services, there's a lot of detail to each of them. But the highlight I would say under purchase services is transportation in particular for special education. Sorry, Kelly. Special education and athletics was much higher than what we estimated and budgeted for. So these are two things that we're going to need to take a look at this fall to get a sense of what we're doing, what changes can we do to make that better aligned with what we're expecting? So stay tuned for that. We're going to be meeting with the departments and working on those things. But those were not at all will be what I was expecting to see. Supplies, there's details there, really electricity over, natural gas under. But supplies ending at 100% of budget is pretty close. Capital outlay again, 99.7, pretty close. Other, the thing on other is that includes tuition, so that's students that are outplaced. If you recall, we had a mid, mid-year report that I mentioned that we're having less expenditure than what we were trending for on tuition. And part of that was because we had, we were bringing students backing it. We were, we were bringing students back into our schools, which we thought was a wonderful thing and a wonderful thing to celebrate. At the end of the day, we looked at this again mid-spring and realized we actually have the same number of students outplaced than what we had budgeted, just they weren't necessarily outplaced for the full year. Right? The, the students came, they left and there might've been a month or two gap between the total number of changes. So that's why we ended up under in terms of tuition. And then non-cap equipment was extremely close. And yeah, so overall unexpenditures, 99.7. So if you zoom out on expenditures, we came in under budget by 266,000. And on revenues, we were, we received more revenue than was budgeted by 2.1 million. So on our operating budget, instead of a deficit or a surplus of 680,000, we actually had a surplus of 3.1 million. That mathematically is the 680,000 surplus built into the budget, plus being under budget by expenditures by 260,000 and then being revenues more by the 2.2 million on there. So that's a brief big picture of what, what, what happened in fiscal year 24.
The good thing is none of the things that are contained in this very helpful year-end analysis are a surprise. So thank you for keeping us abreast throughout the year. I thought it was very informative and very detailed, but there wasn't any, any surprises. So thank you for that. Any questions? Okay, moving on to item E, the summer 2024 capital projects update and LHS cafeteria update.
Yeah, so we had, Mark's been working pretty, very diligently on a lot of summer projects. And then also there was the request for update on where we're at with the LHS cafeteria bid. So Mark put together the report that's attached for you to walk you through. Those are our summer projects, but also some of the stuff that's happening with the cafeteria as well. Maybe I first asked Mark, is there anything that's changed since we submitted this report last week? It was a full weekend, so.
We did fall short on the opening of the washrooms for the cafeteria. We have ROE inspection tomorrow afternoon and we're hoping to open them by the end of the day tomorrow. But crews were in over the weekend working on them. There are a couple items we're missing, but we should get occupancy, as I said, tomorrow afternoon.
And then the only other thing I think that is worth noting, unless there was something else you wanted to bring to our attention, the Vernon Hills High School roof replacement project was not completed by the school opening. So what is the entrance? What's, what is the impact?
Right now, the, the roof is totally waterproof. So the only thing that needs to go now is all the capping and the flashing, the fascia pieces and the caps over the top of the wall, but.
I just mean, what's the impact on operations with the parking lot or any impact on students?
Everything's been removed from the parking lot. And the contractor will be working weekends and after hours to come. So there'll be no disruption to education during the day, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dan and Mark. Oh, the cafeteria. Sorry. Yes, please, please do update us on the cafeteria bids.
Oh, we are out for bid presently for the cafeteria. This Friday, we will be opening bids, Friday the 16th, on 15 trades. We extended a bid opening till Thursday the 22nd for four trades. The critical ones that needed longer time to work on their bids would be the structural steel, the roofing components, plumbing and electric. So those will be opened on, on the 22nd. Then we should get a full analysis from Gilbane. It'll take him a week or so. They'll start vetting the first bids right away. And then hopefully have a report to you as quickly as possible, definitely by F and F. And we might ask to get some things ordered to stay on budget, possibly for a special board meeting to approve some of the trades. Critical things are HVAC equipment being ordered and kitchen equipment. Long lead times, as we saw with, you know, we purchased the HVAC equipment. You, the board approved it in February and they were telling me I had to find a place to store it in May. And it didn't come to the middle of July, so that's troublesome. So that we want to make sure that we're able to stay on schedule and be able to have the kitchen completed by spring break. So we can have for the last six weeks, six or eight weeks of school, we can be working on a new kitchen and start the demolition of the old kitchen, so.
Okay, so that special meeting might occur in September?
In September, possibly.
In September? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
But once we know more, we'll, you know, inform the board.
Great, thank you. Questions? Okay. The item F, Athletico agreement for the athletic training services at Vernon Hills High School.
Yeah, we had an agreement before with Athletico and so that agreement's up. So now it's time to re-up this, what we have is a two-year agreement. It is a 14% increase from what we paid last year, but we still felt the rate was comparable because we actually have a different provider for LHS. So it's still within, still, we believe reasonable within market. And the, the agreement, the arrangement they've had with Athletico, Athletico has worked really well. And even though 14% for the first year, 3% for year two, we felt were reasonable.
Okay, questions?
I mean, is there a benefit to just having one provider? I know we've talked about LHS and Vernon Hills having their own provider, but at this point, if we're looking at 14% increases, is there a thought of, would we get a better pricing if we were to have one provider for both buildings?
We tried that several years ago. And essentially when we, when we bid out the services, we did not find a cheaper price if we had one provider for the both. And to be honest, the industry has changed since we've done that. Many districts are being faced with no provider, providers dropping them because athletic training, the market for athletic training has declined significantly. So to be honest, to be, even to be able to have an athletic training services provide quality athletic trainers is a little bit of anomaly right now in the market. The industry has suffered since COVID and it hasn't really quite bounced back. When we looked at this before, we had really successful athletic trainers at Vernon Hills and Athletico was still the best price. But Athletico at that time wasn't really able to provide a similar experience for LHS. And so we went with a different provider for LHS at that time. So, and it seems to be working really well, the arrangement right now. So we're at Illinois, Boone and Joint for L, for LHS and Athletico for Vernon Hills. And that seems to be working pretty well.
And I can report anecdotally that Vernon Hills Athletics is supported. It's fabulous support that they get from Athletico. I know that the athletes and parents have been very pleased with the services that have been provided from Athletico, for whatever that's worth.
Okay. Moving on to future agenda items, they're the same ones that are listed. Any other future agenda items that we'd like to discuss that do not appear on this list? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.